Morning Stacy.
Sorry Stacy, I was adding something and I had to keep at it or I was gonna. Oh yeah. Yeah, well I added these two together because this is their all with the year. Yeah, at first I was put that one in, I did these two, so it should be less by that amount and he went up. Yeah, so whether he added, I don't know if the.
And sold numbers don't, I mean this is the two that we're taking out, but see my, the copy cut off.
Was it snowy after your way?
Did you want to go ahead and do Stacy's? You could come up, have a seat.
The hot seat.
The activity for the current year would have increased from this.
Okay, thank you. Long time no see everybody.
I know, what you been up to?
I'm working almost six days a week.
Where are you working?
Really Canyon Mine. I'm their environmental technician and they only have one, so keeps me busy.
I saw on Facebook, did you do a training recently?
Yes, we have been doing trainings every Thursday for the last month and a half. We came up with a new protocol. You miss a training. You miss three in a row, you're out. So I told them 100% participation.
Yep.
So.
That's the only way you're gonna make it is.
Right, and. The other thing that we've been doing is, because we have so many people with different work schedules, sometimes I can't make it on a Thursday. So we hold a training on the last Sunday of every month to go over everything that we did throughout the month. And if they missed the two Thursdays and the Sunday, they're being relieved of duty. And then we also have our treasurer that I don't know if she's gonna be joining me today, she's currently up talking with Bryce. But now she comes in every Sunday and gives an update on budget, so, cuz I told them, I said, none of that's private. You guys are privy to all that information, so she shares all that with her.
So is it Sandy Houston or who?
Sandy Houston and Lori Rose.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Don't you have eight people?
Actually, we just recruited three more.
Yeah, you're up to 11 people.
Um, we're up to 11, possibly 13 if they pass the.
Whoa.
Interview type thing, we've been trying to do a lot of recruitment. We're gonna be holding a meet and greet out at the firehouse for everybody in the community. Because there's so many new people to come out and meet and see the firehouse, meet all the responders. So, and there's a. I also informed everybody, Sean Burke is gonna be holding an EMR class for all of our firefighters who are not EMTs. So that everybody on the department will at least be in the EMR. And I told him I wanted that done by the end of the fiscal year, so he's.
By end of June?
By the end of June, so by the next fiscal year, everybody in the department will be in EMR at least. And if they can't. If they can't dedicate the time to do that, then they'll be relieved as well.
So with the recruitment of more people like that, will you be able to answer the fire calls then? And I realize everybody has different schedules, but.
They do, I used to have a cutoff that I wouldn't respond to a call after 3am. And just so I can make sure that I can get to work by 6am. But if nobody responds, then I just go anyway, depending, you know, I figured we're out there to help the community. So we need to be able to. Have them count on us, so.
How many fire calls have you had this year?
We haven't had any fire. No, I do apologize, we did have one, it was a trailer fire, the brakes caught on fire in. Late February, that was our one and only fire call this year, and we did have two responders respond on that one. The other ones have been, we've had three medical calls in the last month and a half.
So mostly it's medical then?
Mostly it's medical and it turns arounds in the summer, we'll have more fire than we would medical in the summertime.
Is there any way we could get a report from you even if you emailed Commissioner Rackley with just an update so that. Cuz right now on our, when we have our commissioner meetings, we don't have any report from Ride Patch. But if you could just email, even if it's just once a month instead of twice a month. You know, like at the beginning or whatever works, but if you emailed him with an update, you know, how many fires, how many. Medical calls, what, how are things are going, just what you told us with the training and the recruiting, that's all valuable.
Sean does that a lot, he just emails me so that at least I can.
And that, that will work for me only because it's hard for me to break away from the mine a lot. To come in, and I'm trying to find. A volunteer that would represent Ride Patch in commissioner meetings as well, but I can always email Christian Rackley.
Yeah, cuz that would be really helpful, and then do you have an assistant fire chief?
I do, yes.
Who is that?
Michael Bloubyak.
Okay.
Do we need to jump?
Yeah, we do, can, can we, you could just move over, or whatever.
Change between court stuff.
Yeah, no, I get it. Been there, yes.
Sorry.
Okay, so Justice in the P is 1-31. And then when we're done with that, you'll be the GP admin.
I didn't see who it was, I just saw stripes. I hope, well, if that ever happens, I'm devastated. So, I'm sorry, so she asked for what? So the salary part might go up then?
Yeah. Yeah, just in case it might get used, it might not, just in case like after hours.
So how are collections going? There's not that many tickets and stuff probably, right, or there weren't for a long time.
For a long time, and we're still not getting a whole bunch of highway patrol citations either. I mean, it's really, really slowed down.
They're paying more attention to guarding the bridge. They are.
They are. I haven't been out that way. They.
Oh, I see it every day.
I saw two though, the other day.
Probably cuz they were called out here for an accident or something.
Maybe.
That's the only reason they come out.
And I went, I haven't seen any for a long time, I'm surprised.
We get them, but there's not like how we used to get them, he's got a bunch, every day he's downloaded. Maybe we should contact Public Safety and ask why we. I think they're just, and they'll probably say that they're low on people or staff, I mean that's. But that doesn't, I mean, it's one of the busiest interstates in the country. Definitely.
You pretty much kept everything the same.
Yeah.
The only thing that's new is the civil action expense, and I'll just explain that to Karen, like money and its deferred revenue or restricted revenue. And the auditor pointed out this year, surely we need to start using that money. We did not however, and I'll probably have to augment this current year budget. Because we had to put any expenses in there, but Karen's gonna do the windows and all that stuff.
Okay, good.
A portion of this budget to use up some of that money.
Okay.
Cuz it can be used only in her office for.
And then that revenue offsets this as far as the bottom line, yeah. I don't see anything on this. You know, there's still no computer in the law library, cuz we had talked about having a computer in there for people to access. The NRS and different things.
What happened to the one that was, was in there?
I think it was old and didn't work, that's my thought.
Okay.
I mean, it was very old, I know that, so is that something that you could pay for? I'm just asking. I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, you can always say no.
We can look into it.
Okay.
Definitely, cuz I know that, that we wanna get new computers also.
Okay.
And she would buy room computers at a.
But I was hoping maybe if you could have.
Buy an extra one just that happen there.
Yeah, and I don't know if there needs to be a printer, that's something that judges need to decide. But I'm, I'm thinking that maybe they don't need a printer, they just need to visually see it.
That would cost the county more money, they would be in there probably print out.
Stop, yeah. I wasn't talking about a copier, I was talking about, yeah.
Okay, if they can connect to that.
Yeah.
Oh, well forget the printer. Okay, but if, yeah, if you could, would you please? So, anyway, so you have enough in here to cover your computers?
Yeah, then there's certain things I, you know, that we need for the courtroom, like. A bigger TV and stuff like that, that would be coming out of one of these funds.
But. Would that be under capital outlay though, or wouldn't it be under small?
Not in this fund, this fund, those 53 numbers are already considered capital out.
Okay. Looks good to me. Thank you for the computer. Well, I, you know.
Like I was kinda frozen in the end and smiled.
You can always say no, I mean, I don't hold grudges or anything, can always say no. Yeah, anyway, so you're off to Reno or is that?
Yeah, I have to go to Reno, take a quick trip to Reno.
All right, be, be careful.
Thank you.
Very much so, cuz that's.
Thank you.
Good job Karen, thank you.
Sorry about that Stacy.
Nope, not at all, I used to work for Karen, I know this.
That's right.
But back on to the. I will start preparing a report. Maybe at the end of every month, we'll compile it.
That would be awesome.
And then I can get that to you guys. But still have somebody try to bring in that report to do a live representation of Ride Patch.
Okay, that would be great, thank you. And your equipment's good, everything's good out there?
Yep, everything is good, we went through our last training, we went through every single vehicle, started it, ran the sirens, ran the radios. Our extrication truck, we got the generator running.
Which one?
Pumped water, the extrication truck. So, we also put our battery operated extrication equipment in our big brush truck. So that we have an inch and a half. Charged hose for the extrication equipment, which is required, so.
The truck that's sitting outside.
That's the extrication.
Yeah, does it even start?
It does start. It, it starts, it runs, it's not in very great condition, the reason why we left that one outside. It's cuz that's the only one that doesn't hold water, and we didn't want anything to freeze over the winter.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So. And right now, you've been in there, it's pretty cramped.
Are you gonna have any training expenses this year?
Um, yes.
Cuz there's nothing in for this year, I mean, you have budgeted 2100, but there's nothing spent and nothing. So how much do you think you need in for this year before June 30th?
I can, I haven't gotten the quote from Sean yet to figure out how much it would cost for five members to get the EMR. For. And what's really nice is all of the EMS classes and conferences were all free this year cuz they were over Zoom. So that's where that money was gonna go.
So it would mainly be between now and end of June, a Sean expense.
Yes.
So whether that's, I mean, like five, $600, somewhere in there.
It, it could be, yes.
So if we put 600 in for this year?
I think so.
And then leave next year the way it is?
Yeah, let's leave next year the way it is, cuz I've got three members, which includes myself. That needs to renew their EMTs, will have to go to a conference and we always send them the Alco.
Next, next year.
Right next fiscal year.
So you think 600's enough for the remainder of this fiscal?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sean will just have to give you a bargain.
Right, I'll tell him, hey. This is what I have.
You have a new truck.
Yes.
New command vehicle, so.
Yeah, and we turned that into the chief truck.
But you were gonna switch over from the little red, a little red car, little.
Right, yeah, we were, we were gonna switch over, but right now the truck just does not fit. It doesn't fit in the bay. Was one of our biggest.
But the equipment, you could at least have it as your medical response first.
And we do, we have a lot of. We have go bags, oxygen.
In the command truck.
In the command truck. An AED, and just so that if we are responding. I, I do need to get another backboard, all of, we only have one backboard left. And that's because when we backboard on the side, it goes on the stretcher, which goes to Love Lock.
And sometimes you don't get it back.
Sometimes we don't get it back, we had to actually go to Humboldt General when we responded.
How much do they cost a piece?
I gotta, I gotta price them out, I think they're about 250.
So that would be under small equipment? So what are you thinking about for equipment for this year? You have 5,000 that you still left in the budget, between now and June 30th.
I'd like to get. The backboards, I'd like to get another AED. Cuz I need to get one into our big brush truck. And that one's not equipped with one yet.
So, so the backboards, you know, 200, 300, you could get those out of that small equipment tools budget.
Okay.
Also the AED, Cheryl Hauser's in charge of safety, there's a new AED out now that costs less and lasts longer.
Okay.
And. I don't have.
She's at the hospital, correct?
No, no, she's actually community.
Medical.
Oh Cheryl, Cheryl, okay.
So what is your email, and I'll have her email you the information?
StacyBristow@gmail.com.
Okay, just, okay.
Yeah, just S T A C I, Kristen.
So I will have her ma- email you the AED.
Okay.
It's, it's, like I said, it costs less than they have been and it lasts longer.
Okay.
And what I'm, I think the pads and the stuff last longer too.
Now are the. The pads that we have with our AED now, are they gonna be able to be used, I guess I can ask Cheryl. Because we just replenished all of our pads for AEDs, we. At the first of the year, we changed all the pads on.
Yeah, well, you could, you're still gonna use that AED, you just want an additional one.
Right, so, cuz we have additional pads too, that's the reason why I was.
I think they're different, but.
Okay.
As far as equipment, do you need anything else to get that washer and dryer going?
The problem is, is there's nowhere. As far as the washer and dryer, the only thing that I was thinking that we could make work is putting it in that storage room into bathrooms, cuz there's already.
The storage room between the two bathrooms?
Right, cuz there's already water hookups.
Yeah.
So that's.
What's, I mean, there's like janitorial stuff in there now.
Which we could always put in another storage.
Yeah.
We just kept it in between there for.
I think that one, I mean, the dryer requires a bigger vent, so we'd have to figure out how to do that.
Right, and that may just have to go into the back storage. Aside the chief's office.
So are you gonna need to have someone come in, a professional come in and do this with us? We can use those tiers fund for, because I mean, that's part of the washer dryer thing, so can you get that done before June 30th? Those funds have to be spent, those particular funds have to be spent by June 30th.
Then I will make it a priority.
And then, and then you would need to get, you know, the quote to Commissioner Rackley. And we'd have to be sure that it's, it's coded to the right fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can work with him on that, but that, that's really important. That was, those are expensive units and not to.
And they're, and they're just sitting there.
Yeah, not to be able to use them.
Right, and our biggest thing was is when we got that.
There's no water on that back wall at all, is there, on, in the base, in there?
Nope. No.
But can you?
But that's a heated area, you, you get that warm, so. Probably you can, or they can, get water to that back wall, the trouble is the space back there.
Right, we would have to move some things around.
Yeah.
Some of our lockers.
But that's probably a better option, at least you're on an outside wall.
Yeah.
For that dryer.
It could be, we could. And. Since it's already plumbed right there on the opposite side of the wall, maybe they could just bring the plumb right in. And keep it in the bay, cuz I don't like any of the. Gear to be in the common area, I like to keep it in.
Should we get John Henken involved so that he can contact, whether it's BND Plum, I don't know who, you know, to, to get an estimate?
Sure, and that's the other thing I was gonna talk about, building maintenance, where we've got a really bad leak again. Fire heater, it's coming up from the, all the insulation's down and it's just all the waters coming in.
Yeah, the floor looks worse from, from water coming on it.
And in fact, we just got volunteers to. Do janitorial service at the firehouse.
To do what?
Janitorial service.
Oh.
So.
That's great.
Cleaning toilets, sweeping, mopping, um, August 10th. We have set up to have a big dumpster and we're gonna muck out the firehouse.
Oh geez, good.
All the old stuff.
I didn't come to help you.
Yeah. I've got, and that's another one, I said 100% participation.
Yes, yes.
Um, we are donating all the old bunker gear to one of our members who. Was gonna send it back home to the fire academy so that they can use it for training. Cuz I told them, I said, I was gonna throw it out because it's full of mouse poop, we even have everything in tubs. But the mice are still getting in.
Yeah.
We went through and grabbed quite a few traps, just to try to help with the mouse problem.
How about a cat?
Yeah, you know what, somebody had said that, they said, why don't you get like a barn cat?
Well, but even just a cat, a regular domesticated cat, make sure it's, has food and water, I mean, not too much food. You know, wild, yeah, but it has water that's been taken care of, you'd have to have a cat box, you know, yeah, and. Do that, that will take care of your mouse problem.
Yeah, yeah, we would have to pick up.
And there's plenty of cats at the animal shelter, I'm sure.
Yeah, okay.
Or somebody has kittens because, oh, yeah.
Another thing under equipment, if we don't end up using much of that for washer dryer is lighting. You, as you know, you really need lighting though.
Yeah, it's, it's gotten even worse.
Yeah, I know.
In fact. There's been, you know, people, our members are putting in their own funds just to help with lighting and stuff. Flashlights, stand lights, so that when we're working in there, we have enough light, cuz, and. You know, I wanted to check to see if we were to get LEDs, if we would be able to install those ourselves in the bays. Or is that something that we have to have a contractor do because it's a county building?
I think you're gonna, that's something you need to talk to John Henken as well. What is your phone number? What is your phone number?
Seven, seven, five, four, four, two, one, zero, two, one.
Because I, I seriously think for the, the installation of the washer and dryer for your lighting problems, and I didn't get where the leak was, but you can talk to him about the leak.
Yeah, um.
Because there's obviously some maintenance that has to be done there. And he has the contacts, and he has the, you know, and plus, he should be involved anytime we have a building.
Well, and that's, that's the issue that I've had with him before, is he's told me it's not a county building, or they don't go all the way out to Ride Patch. And he's told me before that Emily takes care of their own building, you know? So, um, I told him that we had a spider infestation, and, um, he brought home defense and put it on the table and left. I, I was hoping we were gonna get like a professional company to come spray. But we, uh, we used the two bottles and saturated the firehouse.
I had a, uh, I'd put out a bid to redo the inside of the firehouse.
Okay.
Lighting, lighting, wiring, I mean, the whole flooring. And it was forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We just don't have money to do that.
And you know our, you know our tiles, they're all coming up. The ones that are loose, we have started pulling up because of trip hazards.
I'd take a scraper, just take them off.
And that's, that's exactly what we're going to be doing. And the concrete floor would be better than a trip hazard.
Yes.
So.
Somebody's gonna trip.
Yes, and you know, when, when one of those are loose, if they don't trip on it, they'll slip on.
Yeah.
So. Um, we have our members putting in their own time doing that, too. We've already started doing that.
So it sounds like you're really coming together.
Yeah. Um, I've gotten Marty with, uh, Ride Patch, or not Ride Patch, Love Lock, um, information. Um, our physicals, I wanted to leave that, um, as far as the stain, because I've got four people I wanna get physicals done.
So is that by a hundred and a half?
Till, from now till June thirtieth. And then you have twelve hundred for next year.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, and then I'll, I'll just, I'll just make that work if I just can, maybe I'll just do two, and then after the next, after the fiscal.
Do we need to bump to five hundred for yet this year a little bit?
You're going the wrong way. If you can get by with just five hundred for this year, that would be great.
Okay, then, then we'll do that, is what I'll do, is I'll schedule two, because they, they average about two hundred and fifty a physical.
Uh, the other thing is, if you don't spend two thousand in repair and maintenance, then some of that could go to physicals. I mean, it's the bottom line we look at.
Right, right, okay.
But I have a question about your equipment. You put five thousand in for next year. The equipment threshold is three thousand. What are you planning on getting in equipment?
Um, we've got, with our new members, they'll need to get geared up. Um, so they'll need to get their bunker gear, their wildland gear, um.
Are those things each over three thousand dollars? Yeah.
It's gotta be three thousand required.
I mean, it can, it, the equipment could be moved to small equipment and tools.
Okay.
But to be under equipment, it needs to be at least three thousand.
Okay.
So if not any one thing is three thousand, we need to move that to a different line item.
Um, now, I was.
But you can have a group of them. They have e- each individual one.
Okay, so then that.
That's not.
That, that's not gonna work, no.
So do you wanna move this year's five thousand up to the small equipment?
Yeah.
You can spend it.
Yeah, and then, and then that way we can get them all geared up, um, and Sean is showing me how to, um, when we get new members and we get physicals and they get their gear, we can apply for, to get reimbursed, so he's showing me how to do that, at least try to save money.
That would be awesome. Now, for next year, under equipment, you still have five thousand. Is there anything that's gonna cost over three thousand? And maybe we should move that up to small equipment as well.
It's hard to say. I don't have anything planned, um, as of right now, but it's hard to say what's gonna come up.
Dean, can lighting go under that one? Cuz it adds a hole.
If it's, if the whole thing is three thousand required.
Yeah, and it will be.
Yeah, so you'd leave it.
So we should leave it there.
Right. So you're gonna get a cat?
I'm gonna, actually, I have a friend in Metal Mountain that's trying to get rid of his cat.
No, really, and they're, they can be your mascot. You don't have to take him out on the fire.
So, I mean, because every single time he lands, lands on his left. I was like, oh, boy.
Is he a mouser, though? Don't feed him as well, and he will be.
Yes. The other thing I wanted to talk to you guys about, um, with the inside of our building, for safety reasons, we have a mezzanine up top without railings.
Yep.
And it's a fall hazard. Where would that fall? If I tried to get somebody in there just to put up a railing for safety, cuz that's where we keep all of our extra gear, extra supplies. Do you know where that would fall? Even if I had somebody, and that, that again, in lies the question. I guess I need to check with John to see if I can just bring somebody in to do that.
I added it to the list.
Okay.
I would suggest that come out of the line item that is fifty-two, one hundred, oh, three, one, repair and maintenance.
Okay.
Cuz that's not specified repair and maintenance of equipment. It's just a repair and maintenance.
But there's nothing in there for this year, no?
Right, there's nine hundred for next year.
Yeah. And if we add a a five hundred, that we're, we're going wrong direction.
Um, and, and that's, you know, that's the other thing, we were. We have a friend who has a contractor's license. He was a firefighter for a couple of months. Left, came back, he hasn't joined the department, but had mentioned donating to the department by putting up the railing. So.
So then maybe we pay for materials and he would do it?
Yeah, yeah, cuz we were all just chipping in money. Buy materials.
But if you have someone like that, you gotta make sure they have a certificate of insurance, so that we're not liable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want?
So maybe we should put some money in repair and maintenance.
I was saying maybe two fifty. Lumber's gone up. I don't know how much lumber's.
Yeah, I think that'd be low. But the, this wall is probably forty some feet.
Somewhat five hundred.
Yeah, I think so. At least there's something in there in case.
I mean, if we have to wait until next year, next fiscal year, we've gone without it this long.
Yeah, the only problem is, is that, um, if somebody were to fall, it's gonna cost us a lot more than.
Yeah.
Right, right. Well, I don't let anybody up there except for me.
Yeah, well.
It actually has a pull down ladder to get up.
It does. It does.
So we'll put five hundred in for this year, and, and hopefully it won't cost that much, but.
So maybe ask him if that's something he could do.
Okay.
So Stacy, I'm sorry, you're Stacy, is it E Y?
S T A C I.
I, no wonder I've got it wrong. And then Briscoe is B R.
I S T O W.
S T O W? Oh, okay. I didn't spell that.
But like I said, we are gonna be holding that meet and greet, um, on April twenty-fifth at noon. If the commissioner or anybody else wants to come out and have a hot hog or a hamburger. And then meet the other community. There's a lot of new people that have moved in, and this is the reason why we wanted to hold this gathering.
I will be in Florida. I'm sorry, I won't be there.
I won't.
And I actually will be visiting my mom in Southern California, so.
Mary, what is your email?
L Ratley. At Persian County N B dot.
Persian County, all one word?
Yes.
Okay. Email addresses have changed since I left. And do you want these monthly, or do you want them biweekly?
Monthly would be good.
Okay.
If you did it at the end of the month, then we could have it for our first meeting at the following month. If you did that every, you know, end of the month.
Okay, um, is it the first Tuesday of the month or Wednesday?
First Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Do you want to talk to him about this? Do you want me to? I can't spell mezzanine.
Mezzanine?
Yeah. Yeah, I should put loft, loft.
That, that works.
I can spell that.
The whole list.
Yeah, um, the washer and dryer, we need somebody to go out there do plumbing, but she has to figure out where. But maybe that wall on the other side, but he needs to get with her.
Yeah.
There's a leak.
And be nice to her.
Yeah. Light, lighting, and then the loft, they need railing, and that's your phone number in this. And she can get her own cat.
My own cat.
Good job, thank you.
So do you have a separate account for when you do fundraisers and stuff, a separate checking account other than the budget?
Um, we have a bingo account that our treasurer, um, takes care of. So if there's any fundraisers or anything like that, it goes into that account. Um, myself and the assistant chief have got a card for that one. Um, as far as the Ride Patch account itself, we have a card for that checking account, but we both cut it up, cuz we were told not to use it.
Oh, okay.
So all of that is just with Lori. Um, she handles both accounts and just.
Do you have very much in it?
I, last time, the last update that we got last month was about thirty-six hundred. So.
That's actually more than I thought. I thought it would be lower than that.
Yeah, um, and that is pretty much money that, um, is still kind of leftover from the last fundraiser that we did. So we, um, we held our first and only fundraiser a couple of years ago, and we had a really good turnout.
You had one at the Gold Diggers, and I, I went to that.
I wished we had a really good turnout, um, the food was good, the participation was good, um, I, for one, would have much rather have had it across the street in the park.
Ah, yeah.
Because.
You get too much drinking going on.
Well, yeah, and you know, I absolutely love the community that supports us, but I don't wanna make them go to a bar.
Yeah.
Let's do it in the park. If they wanna go to the bar, they can walk across the street.
Yeah, that'd be good.
But the reason why we had held it there is the bar owner, um, donated a ton of prizes and donated the food and everything like that, and I think that was to just get him business.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Is there anything else that we need to know about?
Um, no, no, um, I just wanted to let you guys know that, um, we have created the new policy. I am making everybody in the firehouse sign it, so they are aware.
Good.
That if they miss, um, three trainings in a row, they're removed. Um, and unexcused. I mean, if they're working, they can't help it.
Yeah.
We'll hold a special training for them. But if you're not working and our training schedule has gone out three months in advance, so you know when your trainings are. So, and if they miss it just because they forgot, we need to be a priority.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And thanks for doing the reports. That'll be awesome.
Yep, not a problem. It's good seeing everybody.
Yeah, it's been a while.
So John doesn't do regular maintenance on this building?
He actually told me.
Really?
That's what she just said. That's why I said we need to have a, like a workshop meeting out there, so you could see what that building looks like.
Well, I will say that more, buildings and grounds do not maintain fire. Oh, okay. But if we pack late, but we've replaced heating units, then buildings and grounds, yeah, well. But it hasn't been an issue for the partners, like they, they have done it themselves, have that ability to do it.
My concern is she wouldn't know who to contact for getting quotes on stuff, and, um.
They are, I mean, they are.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm concerned that.
Can our county guys do plumbing?
It would just depend on what it involved.
Yeah.
They can do a lot of stuff.
Okay. And there's a leak?
I didn't hear where it was, though.
Someone there's a leak. So was Love Lock? There he is. I was just gonna ask. Will mask enough for six feet of fire? You're good. You're good. Hello.
How are you?
Marty should, Marty should be here.
And you may not know this, but like for Sean Burke to come in and do training for a day.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think we put five, so we're probably close.
Yeah. Hey Marty. Firehouse. Commissioner. Yeah.
Really, what's the remittance to the outside governments in this?
That's the portion we pay back to the city, sixty-five percent of Rodney's salary.
You know, I brought up that, that combined meeting about us just paying all of it and then just billing them instead of. Some of it goes this way, some of it goes that way. Would that be any easier? If there was one budget?
It's probably easier as this.
And they, it was kind of side skip to.
Yeah, and I'm not, I wasn't trying to make more work. I just was trying, thinking that.
Because Lisa Booth does the actual voucher for the person and brings the two.
And I see now, green on the services and supplies, do, when I take them a bill for service supplies, does she give it to you and you pay the whole thing? And then you reimburse her some of that or?
Yeah, if she brings us a voucher, we pay it all and then quarterly I send.
Then you give it back.
I send her a report and say, these are our totals.
So I'm doing it right by taking it all to her. So she pays, if I don't take it to her and I bring a voucher for us, then the city don't pay any of it, right? Yeah, so there's something to think about. All my big R stuff and, and the stuff that I know, like if I put, I put an electrical governor on their truck, it was thirty-four hundred dollars. We had to replace, so I made a voucher out to the city and they have to pay that whole thing. It doesn't, she didn't see that at all. But if I take a big R in there that's like supplies that we have around there, then I think she just brings that voucher to you or.
They do a voucher over.
Over the top of them?
And then it comes in and then quarterly I send her. And then they cut us thirty-five percent.
So the power and the heat, is that for one of the buildings or both of the buildings?
The power and the heat is for all of them. Yeah, so that's for the front firehouse and the back firehouse.
And then do they pay a portion of that? I said bill. See, I'm so confused with.
So what, what I send to Lisa is miscellaneous services and supplies fifty to one hundred. All the way through small equipment fifty to nine. So, we pay the entire amount, but we get thirty-five percent back on power, on heat, on phone. Vehicle expense, fuel expense, et cetera, et cetera. So next year, I, the total from what Rodney requested is sixty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. Their thirty-five percent will be twenty-two thousand three thirty coming back to us in general fund rate.
Quarterly you write them, which, over the whole year, you write them a check back for about twenty-two thousand or no, for the opposite?
They write us a check.
To pay for all of this and that comes out of my budget. Right? City budget.
The grant administration, she like is, what I know of is. Like the portion that each part of her can pay on pool pack grants for this park this and that.
Okay.
I don't know what his request is. So it's a matching one, okay.
So technically it may not be seventy-three hundred then for this year. If we, anything else that's.
Pardon? Sorry, I was listening, I was looking at mine.
We'll, we'll let you get settled first.
Okay.
Administration.
This one I hear for seven thousand.
Seventy-three hundred.
Yeah.
What is that for? Because all I'm aware of Rodney is the three thirty-five.
For the code.
Guys had to pay for the codes.
Yeah.
Grant didn't cover.
And the, the grant was for about seventy-three hundred dollars for that, to teach the class plus the codes. I mean, book, this, no, this isn't, this is a completely different grant. This grant was for firefighter one.
Hey Marty.
Class and all the books, and that was all the books for Grass Valley, Ride Patch and Emily. And the few that we got, so probably eighty percent of it went to, a big chunk went to Sean because every one of his people needed it. I got one for every person in Emily and then Ride Patch didn't want any. And then I think we picked up another four or five books.
Okay, so is that what we are calling the. A F G grant assistant to firefighter grant? Because I have that completely in a different area.
And how much is it?
Emergency management grants. I have three thousand three seventy-five is what we have spent so far.
No. Unless you, you didn't take the coats out of there, did you? No.
So see, this other grant you're talking about.
See, I'm not sure what that, that, I'm assuming that that's the grant for that class. That never has, we, we got the books, we actually paid for those and then they can't.
Is thirty-three seventy-five was the source, the books that you bought.
Yeah, but that, that should come out of the. I'm assuming that that whole grant was seventy-five hundred or whatever that was, seven.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three hundred. I assume that whole grant was for seventy-three hundred. We'd have to ask Mike. But what that was for is was all the books and then to pay the, the people to come in and finish teaching that class. And then the COVID thing started and then they gave us, we talked, you even talked to Mike, the paperwork in on it. He said they gave us an extension on it and so.
And so see, my concern is you have it in your Love Lock Fire Department line item. I have it under emergency grants.
Okay.
Because it's for all four fire departments. So technically it should not be in your Love Lock Fire Department line item.
In the county part.
Correct.
Yeah. So I, that's what I'm assuming that's from, but it already shows that we took three hundred and thirty-four dollars out of it.
That's for the parks.
That was.
That three thirty-five is your allocation of your department's purpose. Ride Patch got charged that, Emily got charged that and Grass Valley got charged that.
Oh, so that was.
Amount of money that was spent less the grant coverage was.
Okay, I understand that.
Twelve hundred dollars to be split amongst four departments.
To pay for all of them, yeah. Okay, now I understand that. So I am not, and it doesn't show we ever had it before. Cause it doesn't show we had it in nineteen twenty or eighteen nineteen. I mean, the last three, previous three years, we never had that. That, um, that seventy-three hundred in there.
I think when we have a grant that applies to all four fire departments, we need to keep it under emergency management. Not under you. Because it's not technically all your expense.
No.
So we need to change this to three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Cause that's all you need.
Oh, from seven to, oh, that we're gonna.
And see, we never really budgeted for grants because we don't ever know if we can get them or not. And when we do get them, then I'm allowed to correct the budget.
Okay. So then our grant administration should be, and as far as I know, that. That's about the number that was on that grant for.
Well, I don't call an A F G.
Yeah. Which, yeah.
So we need.
So how it got in the budget? I don't know if I put it in there last year or.
And then for next year, we don't know if there's gonna be any pool pack grants or anything like that.
We're, we're actually going to put it in a grant for, which will probably, it won't be a county grant, it'll be a city grant. And it'll be to put the exhaust system in the, the firehouse. And that'll be through, we'll go through them and hopefully we can get that.
So for next year, we could have it zero.
Yeah, the grant administration is.
Shouldn't ever be in here.
Kind of like the county match. If there is known match amount, we would put it here.
Okay.
But if you don't know what the match amount is or there isn't a match, then you should go to zero.
So we'll put.
Is there enough money in the other account then?
We haven't seen that yet, right?
We could put five hundred in there in case there's a, a match. And, and we can always, pool packs is a great way to go if we can. So for this year, three thirty-five and next year, five hundred.
So we're gonna change that to. Five hundred?
Yes, for next year. And it would only be used if you have like a pool pack grant or another grant that has a batch.
Yeah.
This is next year. And then this, we're gonna take down to three thirty-five, so that's what we.
Is there that kind of money in that other kind? In the. Emergency management.
Well, again, that is just usually if we know that there's a grant. Right now, there's three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars already spent for.
Already spent.
So when is Mike gonna be back, Hydenman?
He'll be back probably next week, the end of the month.
He really needs to come in and see Ream because she needs paperwork for reimbursement.
And I've talked to him about that before and Ream's talked to him about it too, right?
About a while ago, he was gonna get the extension and then I never heard anymore. And see, if we don't get reimbursement for what we've already spent, then that becomes.
That's what I was concerned with.
Where we would use, have to use that, oh, that seventy-three hundred, right? Then we'd have to take it out of. Well, I, we could break it up.
You have to.
We'd have to break it up to, uh, to, between us and Emily and Grass Valley.
We're not gonna break it up between anybody. We need the paperwork so we can get reimbursed.
There you go.
Period.
But I'm just saying that.
Yeah, you're right.
We only got like three or four books out of it and then Sean got the amount that he has out there and right, Emily did.
Yeah.
And then right that shit.
Yeah. One other thing that's kinda scary, just so we're back on the emergency management grants, we have not got any money in from E M P G. And even from SERF, none of those grants, the state, whoever, the feds.
So you asked Sean about that and he doesn't have any.
Just check him on it.
No, they're not COVID. They're regular grants that we get every year that he applies. So it's part of like the Leipzig committee, they, we. Talk about different things. I get confused. Some of it is for firehouse stuff, some of it's for.
Yeah, we got some S C B As and we got, I mean, there was a little.
And sometimes the grants are for sheriff to, you know, it just.
Lot of it's for that.
Okay, do you wanna start the fire department from the top or how do you wanna work those?
Well, we can start at the top. Are you ready?
I think I'm ready now. I can't, I've kinda had it wind out to start with, you know, and then I got.
We should have taken it easy on you because you've been on vacation, you know?
Yeah, well, it's only gone a week.
Been on vacation, ready.
Yeah. I should have been ready, huh? Okay, so miscellaneous services supplies, we, uh, that's. We're at, um, three thousand three hundred now and, you know, we, we have projected for five thousand. But we took a thousand off of that when we went, remember when we all had to cut our budget last year and knock it down? So that's, that's where that went. So we raised that back up to six thousand.
For next year.
For next year.
And you think you're gonna spend the five for this year?
Well, it's like, we're already at four and we still got, it's gonna be pretty close.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, our, our budget at the, I mean, we do not spend what we don't need. And I mean, it might look a little heavy at first, but we're not, and I know that you're not supposed to do a budget that way, but. We do give a lot back, so. Ream could probably tell us what percentage we're at right now or, or what we do give back in the last few years.
Actually, you guys, you know, it's three thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars.
On the.
We had some in vouchers last week.
On the miscellaneous service, yeah, okay.
So you better leave it at five thousand.
So that's, we bought, we, a lot of stuff, and then the power, we can't do nothing about that. You know. We, I mean, we could, we try to save power, but you know what I mean? That budget is pretty much hit set. And I mean. You can see from the past that we've pretty much been in that fifty-seven hundred range right in there. It were three thousand already. So, and then we've got. The heat, thirty-two hundred and we're twenty-six hundred now, so I think we're, that's a pretty fair number, I think.
Yeah, now it's gonna start slacking off, so.
Yeah.
Well, we hope it's gonna start slacking.
And the phone and fax is sixteen hundred bucks. It's, you know, we're at eight hundred now, well, almost nine hundred. So we'll probably give a little bit of that back. Grand administration, we're gonna zero that out, right? Or we're gonna go five hundred for next year?
Five hundred for next year and three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five for now. Leave it right there. Vehicle expenses. That's a hard one. I mean, last year we spent. What's sixty-five hundred? Well, eight thousand, huh?
Eighty-six hundred.
Twenty and twenty-one, we spent sixty-five hundred. We're at twenty-one right now. I don't, I wouldn't go any lower than, cause you never know, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, once we start replacing tires and stuff on some of the rigs, I know the, the new tanker is getting to, I mean, the tread and everything looks good on them. But.
With their age.
When they get to a certain age, you know, you should replace them. So we're gonna have some expenses. We'll probably use part of that on that this year to use. Use part of that budget. Fuel expenses, thirty-five hundred. We're already at forty, twenty-four now. And, uh, fuel's going up. I don't know, I know diesel's up like three fifty now and gas is getting up there.
So you really, yeah, you don't have but like a thousand left.
Yeah.
You need to.
So it's gonna be pretty close, depending on how busy, our busy time's gonna be the summer when we really start, you know?
Yeah.
Before July.
Yeah.
So that might actually go over a little bit. The physicals, I. I doubled that.
But I'm still back on fuel expense. You need that up a little bit, you think, between now and the end of June?
You have a thousand dollars.
You only have a thousand dollars left.
Are, are all of your trucks full right now?
Yeah. Our ambulance does, if you, one trip to Reno's thirty-two gallons of diesel.
Maybe that should be another, at least another thousand dollars higher.
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you wanna go to forty-five dollars?
Is that enough?
Okay, but this is just fuel for fire trucks, right?
Yeah. Your fire trucks are gonna be. Yeah, it's just depends. I mean, we're running a lot of. Yeah, it's just depends. I mean, we're running a lot of equipment out there. I mean, if you don't use it, I know it's, you could. Probably use that on somebody else's budget. Are we gonna use another thousand between now?
Just save it at forty-five in case you need.
For next year too, right?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now, physicals, the problem with the physicals is, well, a lot, most of our physicals for most of our guys are coming up this next year on a bunch of them. And the increase on the physicals was like three hundred and fifty-some dollars per physical, an increase, so almost doubles of.
We gotta get up to the NRS standards and do like, it's about, they could team, um, there's three testing and add-ons each.
Yeah.
So is it total like six hundred dollars a physical?
It's gonna be, what's a normal, probably.
Stacy was saying two fifty.
Yeah.
See, it didn't, and it depends on when they are, when the firemen came in and what age they are. On how often they have to have it, so we don't, we did. Not as many this year, and if we have a new person come on, they have to have physical before they can go. Uh, on ambulance or a fire truck or anything, so they can't do anything till like minimum physical and sign up all their stuff, so.
Yeah.
We're getting a price.
Okay, so the physicals for this year, you've spent just under thirteen hundred. Do you have people that are coming up before June thirtieth?
Yeah.
I only know the like a second one, so yeah.
Yeah, I know of.
You, Patty.
Um, I know there's four or five that are coming up, yeah, before July.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, so hers isn't even on here yet either, probably. I don't know what, I mean, that's. We, we might be able to cut it down a little bit, but we've got two new members that just came on and they're both. They probably, they'd had their physicals, but I don't know.
So are you putting in for reimbursement when you have a new member for their. For gearing them up and stuff? Cause we can get reimbursed from that, for that.
Yeah.
So are you putting in for that?
We've put in before and we haven't ever got anything. And Sean's done the same thing and he's never got anything. So I mean, he writes a letter and we just never. You know, Sean was one of the first ones to put in and he never got anything.
So what, who, who is supposed to reimburse us? What?
It's supposed to go through a grant from, through the Nevada State Firemen's Association. So you send, you send them the information and then something happened with whoever was administrating that, um. Grant and.
At the state.
It's just hasn't, something, I don't know whether they took the grant back or we've never, I haven't heard any more about it for a long, long time. And they haven't had any, uh, you know, we belong to the NSFA and, and usually have. They haven't had anything for the last year or so because of the COVID, so.
Okay.
But I could check on that. So I don't know where to go with the, uh.
The physicals for this year?
We could probably go, we could maybe go down to seventy-five hundred for next year.
Oh, for next year?
What do you think?
I would, I.
I don't know.
I don't think.
I know you have, I know you're. Well, that's, this is our budget, so.
Debbie said with the added, uh, testing, it's around six hundred. She's getting us a number, but she said it's around six.
So if it's six hundred per person.
Yeah.
And you have five this year, you need three thousand. So you've already spent twelve, so four, oh, yeah, you'll use.
We're gonna be.
Need to stay right there, yeah.
So I don't know.
And then six hundred and how many do you have for next year, do you think?
We've got quite a few for next.
Unless you're gonna have a few new people, I'm sure.
And these just do.
Okay.
You could. So you haven't done a lot on repair maintenance. Anything? Planned there?
That would be on our vehicles and stuff.
Did you put that one?
Yeah, this is the one that. This is the one that I used to have a capital outlay one to pay for like, you know. Helmets and we, you had turnouts in it and stuff and all that. And we had that on, we cut that clear, remember last year, we cut it clear out.
There's nothing there.
And so there's nothing there. So that's where we put a lot of that stuff. Like, I know I just, I just ordered six new inch cover, three-quarter hoses, which are about three hundred and something a piece. And three of those will go to the county and three of them will go to the city, so that's almost a thousand dollars right there. So that's gonna go into. That's gonna go into, it could go to services supplies, but I think it's gonna be mainly, it's almost a maintenance item to replace hose that's been ruined, you know? I mean, it could come, I mean, it could come out of either one of those, however, whatever one I charge it to.
What about small equipment and tools?
Small equipment and tools would be like, we just bought. We, for the rescue truck, we just bought a, a battery pack, um, circular saw that has a steel blade on it. And then a reciprocating saw and they were. They were almost a thousand bucks, eight hundred and something, with the two extra batteries and that. So I mean, that's where I go with my small equipment and tools and. And like, um, ranches and stuff that we use for, um, breaking down hoes.
Yeah.
And, uh. We do, we do a maintenance on our, um. Rescue tools. So like, I mean, I can use that under services and supplies or I could do it under, uh, small equipment tools, but that's, that's a pretty good bill every year.
What about training? You've got five thousand for this year.
Raised it back up to, uh.
Seven fifty, or seven thousand.
Yeah, cause we took two thousand off. So that's our, that's our money we do for training for when we go to the state fire marshals classes. That'll be traveling and, and to stay down there. And then when they have the, uh, when they do have the firemen's, uh, training. It's Nevada State Firemen's Association, we'll send like five or six guys to that. And that'll, that usually pretty well eats up that amount, you know?
Yeah.
By the time they do three days down there with, uh, motels and travel and stuff. This year, it's gonna be an Elko, so.
And there's that still this year?
Are they gonna hold it?
The what?
Is that before the end of June?
Yeah, it's in June, yeah.
But you won't need almost five thousand dollars for that, will you?
Uh, it doesn't look like, if, I'm, I'm, they might not need it this year. I probably won't need five thousand this year. But hopefully it opens up next year.
Yeah.
But how much could, do you need for this year?
Oh.
Two thousand? I'm, I'm throwing out numbers, one thousand.
I know we, we discussed, guys signed up for some classes in Carson and. And they'll probably can just come home, you know, drive back home after work.
So.
I, I could say, we could probably cut that down to twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five.
Now. The hazmat class will be. That's gonna be, the hazmat class is gonna come out of the. Ops, we just got a deal for hazmat ops that just came today. And I'm trying to think where, it's on. It's in Carson, no, it's in Reno. And we need a bunch of guys to go to that, but that would be go down and back. So.
Is that in the, one of the Lepsy grants, like SERF or, I don't know which grant is fire.
No.
Which is, cause I get confused on them, or EMPG.
This is just state training.
Cause you know, one of the grants that Sean does relates directly to hazmat, so. When there hazmat related. And I don't know which one.
Who might be able to? Uh, we could cut it to twenty-five for this year and then I would.
Think.
And then I'd leave it to. Or three thousand?
That's what I was thinking.
And then I'd leave it at, and I'd leave it at seven for next year, cause we're gonna, I. We go through, I mean, we use, uh, you can see where we've went over the years before when we were able to, with this COVID thing, it just cut the training way down. You know?
So three thousand this year, seven thousand next year.
Yeah, next year, yeah.
And small equipment and tools, you're gonna spend. Over five thousand the remainder of this year?
In, uh.
In small equipment and tools.
Small equipment and tool.
Between now and June thirtieth, you spent two thousand fifty-eight. And you've got seventy-five hundred budgeted for this year.
Yeah, we just spent another grant, so that's three. We could probably cut that to five.
Okay, I like that, thank you. Okay, that's that.
And then the readmittance, remittances to government, that was, I doubled down. And that's, that's the fire chief's wages. And we talked about that last year and you put a freeze on and the count and the city, so they couldn't do nothing either, so. This year, when we went in for the budget deal, they said if the county does their share, they would do theirs.
Yes.
So what are we looking at? Refresh my memory. What were we looking at raising it to?
This year, for the, for the fire chief, it's gonna go from five hundred to a thousand a month.
If that's what I needed to know. So we'll have to decide that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So I don't know what those totals are gonna come to now, Ream, but. Cool, good. Anything else?
Ambulance.
So it's tab number twenty-four in the covered.
Or we go too far in ambulance, we had put in for, um. More wages and fire. More personnel, I guess, is the correct terminology. I did not put it in this paperwork because if you could. Would've been something like, um. Seventy-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Let me get back to.
So now, are you figuring that's the minimum? We figured, if we went the, if we went the full scenario that we talked about originally, where you had six paid EMTs.
Oh, you're talking about that?
That we're talking about, we put it in the budget because.
That's not on the paperwork.
It's not on the paperwork, but this is what.
Okay, are we talking ambulance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought we were going back to the.
No, ambulance, number twenty-four.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I was.
So Ream did not send their request for paid fire.
Right.
I put in the request for a new ambulance and by doing that, it gave them the ending fund balance. I did not put on any extra personnel because that would've put in like five hundred thousand dollars in the bank.
Oh, the short, well, without the other stuff in there.
Yes, see.
That's just putting the ambulance in there.
Correct.
And the ambulance comes, now, this is where I'm kinda confused too. I remember. It was my understanding when we did the emergency vehicle funding, that that was for all emergency vehicles. So that would cover, well, originally it was just fire stuff. And then it became sheriff stuff. And so.
It's safety, the whole thing is for safety.
So your ambulance could.
The option tax.
Your ambulance could come out of there if you have the money.
The ambulance should come out of the ambulance fund because we should be collecting our fees.
Yeah, so and we're, the last I knew, we were at four thou, four hundred thousand and now we're at three something, you said, right?
Okay, the option tax resolution, the last one I have is April of twenty-twenty and it specifically says. One ambulance for operations in Lovelock purchased in fiscal year twenty fifteen. With one additional purchased in twenty twenty-two in each period of seven years thereafter. Ambulance shall be purchased from the ambulance fund with insufficiencies of the purchase. Coming out of the option tax.
So we have the money for that, right, the ambulance?
No, you don't.
We were doing really well, collecting money for ambulance, you know, fees. And that's with REMZ, I mean, you know that.
Yeah.
And so it was building up so that you would be able to have enough money for an ambulance out of the ambulance fund. But, or really close to it, but now, I mean, it's just, it's dwindling because.
So let me ask a question. So does the, the ambulance budget comes out of the ambulance? Does it come out of the general fund or does it come out of the?
All by itself in a separate.
Oh, so it has to, it either has to pay for itself or you guys have to kick in some for it, right? Right?
Or, no, it has to pay for itself. There's no kick in to it.
Oh, you mean if it doesn't pay for itself, we just shut down for a while or what?
No, and I know that's not the case. We'd have to transfer money from like Pilt or something.
Yeah, so I mean.
Which we don't have any of that either, so.
Yeah, okay, that, so now I understand why it went from four something down to three something.
Well, and if you look, Marty, this year's expenses are estimated at, on your front cover sheet. Estimated at one fifty-seven, eight fifty-six. Next year is bumped up to three fifty-three, one thirty-seven because of a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, in twenty twenty-two, yeah, yeah.
So do we do the twenty, we almost have to order the, the, the ambulance to get it in.
How long ahead of time do you have to order?
It'll take some six or seven months to get it down.
What's wrong with the one that we have now?
Nothing.
Okay, so we could, we could hold off.
It's at fifty, it's right around fifty thousand miles right now. The, uh, the one that we had to put the engine in that cost twenty-five thousand dollars is at. Hundred and ten thousand or something like that, that is like. Really makes me nervous whether it's dependable or not, because after we got the new engine in it, we've had it back into the shop a few times. Um, and then our other one is a two thousand and it's got a hundred thousand miles. Maybe a hundred and ten or something.
Nine hundred two.
Yeah, I. If we were gonna get a new ambulance, I would take nine oh two, our second out ambulance, and I would take that out of service. I would keep our two thousand. Because it's very dependable and, uh. You can, you can count on.
Is the nine oh two the one you put the new engine in?
That's the one I put the new.
That's been a lemon from the beginning.
Well, you would keep that one in service and keep the first one out now.
As second, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, it's kinda like, when we did that engine thing, twenty-five thousand dollars, I really didn't think it was a. You know, and we talked about, talked about it and then the commission decided to go ahead and put the money in.
Yeah.
So right now, and I know two should be our one that goes like on transfers and stuff, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I just sit there and let it run for at least an hour sometimes and it'll cut on the freeway and then it'll kick back in.
So I mean, it's, it was the year that they had a lot of problems, that was the engine that came out of it and they had a lot of engine problems.
So the one that has fifty thousand miles, what unit is that?
That's a two thousand fourteen, yeah.
And then, is there another one?
Nine oh three, which is the two thousand.
Eight, eight, eight. It's a eight, two thousand eight.
I know.
It's got a, nine, nine oh three's the two thousand and it's, yeah, over a hundred thousand.
Yeah, but it's the more reliable.
Yeah, and once you kick it back in the third, get the third one out. That, you know, it's basically when nine oh two goes down, we move that up until it's back in service. And then if we have a call where we have. Multiple, you know, very rarely we send them all three out, but it has happened in the.
Last Sunday, they all rolled, all three rolled and moved back around.
Wow.
Just outside of town.
One's out of, the, the third one's out of the road shop.
The fourth, the fourth, that's the fourth one. That's a ninety-five.
Oh, yeah. So you may.
And I think it's probably more reliable than the, the second out ambulance, to tell you the truth.
So you may use that for events or something like that.
We could.
Yeah.
I think you have to do, put the radio, right, it has to get up.
Put the radio back in them.
But like on events, like the COVID problem, stuff, we'd be using nine oh three.
So we've got nine oh two, the, the compartments, compartments completely sealed off on the background. And then we use it for any that, we make sure we use it for COVID. And then we just, cause when we just affect that. After we spray it now, it's what, how long before we can put it back in service?
We wait, we wait thirty, an hour.
Yeah, almost an hour before we can put it all back and then.
You have that new thing, though?
Yeah.
Whatever, I don't remember.
I can never say it right.
Thing works well. Oh, God.
So.
So could we hold off on an ambulance, you think, for another year? Something for you guys to talk about.
Yeah.
And I've been writing insurance, I've been writing Sharp a little bit more in the last couple of weeks. Like, I call them and I sit down and do, you know, and I've been chasing patients around for insurance.
Yes, I mean, it's a lot, Marty has a, she does a lot of work. I mean, it's, it's amazing. And I mean, even with the help she gets, I mean, it's like every day, it's, there's like, and I mean, dealing with the insurance companies. And I, I don't know if it's what we need to change billing companies or we need to get it more so they're more on, um. How would you say more user friendly so that would work and we would get the payments a lot easier? But, I mean, it's been, it has been a struggle.
With Sharp, they want so much more than REMZA. You know, REMZA was just so easy.
Have you checked other billing companies?
We did when we got on Sharp.
Yeah, we actually interviewed.
Yeah.
Yeah, different ones and they were, seemed like they were the best and people were having good luck.
We need to start that process. If we had ten thousand dollars more in income, we could buy a new ambulance.
For me, if we collect.
If we collect, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, ten thousand.
Well, and I'm also reaching out to Sharp already to have to up our pricing for our ambulance, like so. She'll have Marty full-time and then she will bring in extra revenue, right, even with just ambulance.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that, but.
So I think Sharp has shared to up the prices of it leading the barn. Cause yours, you can do it every, every year or something, and I think up a certain percentage.
And we're at nine hundred now?
Yeah.
So, so the big answer here is we just, we need to collect more money.
So, as far as Sharp, and as, well, as far as increasing the fees, that has to come before the commissioners to approve that.
Yeah, but we need to know what we can do.
Right, okay. And then, um, what, I'd have to go back, what were you recommending if we were to hire? Well, I remember now to hire Marty full-time, it was quite a bit.
We ran, we've talked about, we started out at sixty thousand. And went down to fifty to start off, yeah, yeah. And then, I mean, if you actually, if we could get the tax funding, if we could get the people to vote for it and we could get that going. You could go with the minimum amount, you would have to have three people or. You could take one of those, one of those EMTs that could be, you know, between two of them, they could do the. The amount of bookwork that they need to do now and follow up on insurance stuff that needs to go better. They could do, um, they could do a halftime thing, you could make it halftime to the fire department or something. Or somehow do that. And, I mean, that would be the minimum, then we would just have some on, on-call EMTs that were. Would come in and, and they would get per call. And we talked about that, you, and Patty did a presentation and gave you all that. So, I mean, you've got a lot, but eventually, I think that's the way we're gonna have to go because. It's just really hard to, to do what, what we do.
If we had that company that's doing the collection now.
Yeah.
Doing their job, we'd be okay.
Yeah.
So how do we replace that? I mean, if we had our own person doing that, is that the answer?
I don't know.
We could get REMZA back, that'd be right.
They were so good, I mean, they just took our report off the computer and they took that and it was. They did everything off that. Very rarely did they call for just a little bit of stuff once in a while. Now.
So, the way we're doing, bleeding with them to come back?
You're gonna have to speak up. So. If, much, if we had you full-time to handle. All this stuff with whatever billing service you're using, would it bring in more revenue?
Yeah, cause I would be able to check the reports as they come in, to make sure the mileage is on there, to make sure they have the. Consents, which I run around saying, I hope you don't watch them now. Like, it would just, yes, to me, it would make more sense, just.
Yeah, we'd have more.
To be down there to check it every time, because what, what I saw here is they get a report from our Sharp right now. And it tells us that we're missing mileage, or it tells us that we're missing a Medicare Medicaid signature. Then you have to go find the patient, go get their signature and then they fax everything over along with insurance. Information, which I get from pretty general.
So when you do the report, whoever's doing the report, whoever answers the call puts a report in the system?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then they can look at it.
Okay, so does anybody check that before it's sent on to Sharp?
No.
So is, why isn't there a check of it to make sure that?
She'd have to pull every single, she has to pull each one of those up and, okay, that, that takes a lot of time.
So then, the way it works now, then, the individual, whoever fills in the report, it's automatically goes to Sharp. Then Sharp comes back, comes back and says, we're missing this, this and this.
It uploads to the state where they get their information and then it uploads to Sharp who does the bill. So, I mean, it's. And, and you know, a lot of, a lot of it too is, we're supposed to have those reports done in twenty-four hours. And then you're talking about twenty-some people, different people that go on those calls. And they're, they'll get back and, you know, they'll, they'll grab their paperwork, they'll stick it in their box and, well, I'm gonna come back and do it this evening. And well, then, it might not be that evening they does it, it might be like day after tomorrow.
Yeah.
I mean, they still accept it and everything's good, but.
Everybody on the call has to do a report?
No.
Just on that.
The lead person on the call. So, so out of four, so, so you do, say we do four hundred calls a year. And there's, but you have to do one on every patient too. So if you go on that call and you have three patients, then you have to do a report for all three patients. If you go out and you have a refusal, you have to come back, you don't get paid for the refusal, right?
Yeah.
So you come back and you still have to do a report on the person that said they didn't wanna go. And if you're on an accident scene and you get, you call some people, and then the people on the other part of the accident, you check them out. And then you do a, you have them sign a release, and then you have to make out a report on every one of those. So, you can almost, you can imagine how many reports go with any kind of call.
How long does it take to fill out the report?
Oh my gosh. For some people, it's pretty good. For me, I could spend, I could spend a half hour on a report. But I don't have to go to work or anything, you know, I'm already there, you know, so it's kinda like.
But it'll still take you a half hour.
Oh, easy, yeah. By the time you have to get the, when you get back, you have to have all of your vitals and stuff, you have to get a report from the hospitals, a face sheet. And then you have to get a report from the sheriff's department that gives you all your times and mileage and all that stuff. So you have all this paperwork and then you have to transfer and answer all the questions that are in the computer. And, and a lot of the stuff that's in the computer doesn't match what the patient's problem was, and it's multiple choice on a lot of it. There's no way you can fill it in and then, so it's a narrative at the end, then you gotta make sure you get all that in there. And then you have to have a signature from the patient, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what if the patients are unconscious?
Then you sign for.
So three people have to sign.
Yeah.
So, we'll sign and the, I have a hospital representative saying.
And a refusal, you have to have two witnesses on that too, while you're out there.
So I have been better, just so you guys know, I have been, but I mean, it's a lot worse, but. My report issues not as bad as it has been, but I think, and that's good thing about PJ shoes, I'm able to pull up insurance and fill it out that way. And I, we came up with a solution with the reports, but like, so now we're putting up an ambulance. I mean, I can't take one to people's foreheads, but I put somewhere they can see them, the consensus. I mean, I used to have messages a lot each week, remind people, hey, get your signatures. Cause I do, I go to my lunch and I go up on the door and have them sign a consent.
So, um, to get the report from the hospital that you need, does that come right away? Doesn't that take time?
Depends how busy they are down there.
And then from the sheriff, that probably is.
Yeah, so you could, sometimes it'll be there when you, as soon as you get back and say you're back at the firehouse. You know, some of them are really good down there, they'll buzz that right out to you. And then the next person, if they have a couple other calls going on with the sheriff's department or whatever, then you don't get it. So then the next day you go in and you call them up and say, hey, I need a report on a accident at mile mark or ninety-six or whatever, then, then she has to pull it up. And then she.
So, so how do you get the report? Email or?
From.
Face, fax, okay, okay.
Yeah, so we don't have the, once in a while, I put, if, if the patient's been in the hospital or at the hospital. Then a lot of times they can just print it out before we even leave and we have that one sometimes.
Okay.
Probably more often. So you can see where we are.
No, I like the explanation because it's better than, it's not, I didn't think it was simple, but.
So you guys know the physicals will be seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Because they had to add a hundred and seventy-dollar HEAT test, a hundred and twenty-dollar nicotine test. And then it's twenty dollars for X-ray reading and six dollars for a cert.
So what was the total, seven twenty-one?
Seven hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Twenty-two. Oh, so seven twenty-three.
Yeah.
And that's because they have, per the NRS for volunteers, they had to help those.
Yeah.
Like, I have to go back and get redrawn, we didn't know, but yes, we have to get those.
And if you don't do that, have those physicals, and if something happens to one of the guys on scene, if one of them. Say one of them gets hurt bad enough that they don't live. Then the insurance and the, you, they won't pay.
Yeah.
Or if you can, or you get lung cancer or any kind of cancer like that, different things they won't pay.
So we don't let, like you said, we don't let our neighbors go at all until that is back, the doctor signed it.
They don't go.
And if they don't, when, when, when Debbie sends out the paperwork, I get a copy of who it goes to, it's like a registered mail. And then they get a cop that it goes to the person that needs a physical. That person, they actually set up the appointment for them and everything. And if they don't make it, and they don't make it, and they don't get their physical, then they don't go on any calls until they get their physical.
So can we go through the ambulance expenditure part?
Yeah.
Please?
This is, this is. This is the one. See, this is the one that we put in.
Yeah. That's the.
Okay, so the phone and fax for this year's twenty-five hundred, and yet we've only spent five sixty-four. And we only have, we have four months left. Last year you spent two thousand.
Well, that probably.
We've only spent this much. We won't need that much.
Can we lower it to two?
How much we use so, or we're not gonna hit two, that's twenty-one, right, so we could probably drop it down to.
Just straight to?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred's even better, thank you.
We don't use the ones anymore, we are under five hundred.
For this year, fifteen hundred.
That's another thing we've done that came through a grant that we picked up for the ambulance services iPads for all of, so we can actually start our reports in there.
Great.
So that's one of the things, but. Training the personnel, some people are.
Are very.
Are very good at it and some people don't use them.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yes.
I do. So, um.
We're trying.
For next year, can we go to two thousand?
Yes.
Okay. And maintenance agreements, yeah, that's probably, no, you, well, you don't have any, do you have any maintenance agreements coming up? I don't know what that would be for, but we spent.
What was that, do you remember what that was for? The maintenance agreement on?
Yeah, I have a question on two things that we haven't shown, like.
You've used it, this.
We've been, and using it.
Yeah. And there might be something that comes up like at the end of the year before June thirtieth.
Yeah.
Sorry, my computer's.
So.
So vehicle expense, I mean, that's the same, fuel expense.
Yeah, leave that, leave that.
Yeah.
It was to image trends, so that's our image trend.
That's, you know, that, we might not have that this year because the state went to, that we, when we were doing our billing with Rents on that. We were on image, the, the computer program that we got was image trend. The state had a whole different program and it was like, it was not real easy to work with, it was really bad. So we went with image trend and then last, was it last year, the state.
The state switched.
The state actually switched to image trend. So I'm not sure if we're gonna get a bill at the end of this year or not, we might not spend any of them because the state pays for it.
And so.
So that's a.
Yeah.
So we kinda picked the right one while we ticked and, uh, but there was so many people having so many problems with the state program that they actually went to image trend. So that could be, we, I don't know if we have, if we have to pay for that this year or we're off of it now. I couldn't tell you that for sure.
Knowing the state, they'll come after everything they can.
Well, it wasn't the state, it was, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
We actually had a contract with image trend to, to do.
So I'd rather have it there and not spend it than not have it there.
But if we don't spend it, we definitely aren't gonna need it next year because that's the program for the state now, image trend. So you could save, if they don't charge us this year, we don't have to pay for it, we won't have it next year. So that's, you know, six thousand dollars there.
Yeah, but we don't know yet, right?
Yeah, I think you better.
I don't even know who to ask, I can email them.
Probably Bobby maybe, or?
Bobby's name.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll message out to him.
Okay.
And we can let Re know about that.
That would be perfect, okay.
We're gonna say, field spend stays seven thousand, right?
Yeah.
General insurance by.
And this doesn't include, this is six and a half months until the twenty-one, so.
So.
It might drop down to maybe. But this is, the reason it's down low right now is because our prices of fuel have been, they were way down.
Yeah, I know, but they're going.
And now they're way up, so.
So association dues.
What are those? That's my, the association dues.
Association dues are.
And you actually have a credit of five hundred this year, means something.
They do five hundred, no.
Yeah. And you had a credit back in twenty eighteen, nineteen too.
So we're wondering, that's what we're trying to figure out, we're part of some things, but.
I mean, it's always good to get money.
Oh, no, your association dues are the dues that you, they're actually your expenses that you pay for your, for your licensing and that. That's where that's going. That's all your, we have to re-register, re-license our EMTs and.
That's from?
Yeah.
I know.
I'm almost positive that's where that's.
But then you must deposit that money because it was done in cash area. So somebody brought us five hundred dollars in December.
Oh, you know what, that because, it was the EMT class, to do their EMT lessons, but they, you think that was, no, that wasn't.
That's right. No, he handed me that.
With the fire department for your check or?
I, I don't know, I can't pull up any more than just a pack.
See, and.
But if that's the case, twenty twenty-two is when half our members are.
Yeah.
They have to.
So twenty-one, we spent two thousand and twenty, we spent fifteen hundred, and then nineteen, it was. Five hundred to the good, I don't know.
Yeah.
Or we were negative five hundred.
Yeah, meaning that, that.
So we spent all the budget plus another five hundred.
No, 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 you got money.
Oh, it's a credit, okay.
Yeah.
So what I, so I paid for it now and I use my card, cause you have, it's a whole new process and so. You have to have a card, you can't send a check anymore, you can't go there, so I just use my Virgin County card and then I do the option for it, so I'm not sure.
So do you need twenty-five hundred for next year and, and this year, or can we lower?
Our biggest group comes up next.
Our next year's our big group, this year.
Is our.
This year, I just did four of them.
So we're done this year and, but.
We have like a new hire, like we have new people come on. So I did twenty-four for both of you guys and I have to do a center four one for them soon.
How much is, is it for each person about? I mean, do you need five hundred dollars for the remainder of this year? I don't know how much it costs.
Three months.
Okay, so I wouldn't write the state for those.
Maybe twenty-four dollars, seventy-four dollars for each new person.
Okay, so it's just over a hundred.
Yeah.
So if we put five hundred in there and we've got five hundred credit, that gives you a thousand, which you're not even gonna need, but.
But next year will be, uh, next year will, you know, be our big years for all of our EMTs, but they run in a cycle from when they got their license, so.
And on it, and then.
General insurance for this year, I'm gonna lower it down to four thousand one hundred and forty because that's the true cost that comes in from A and H insurance and I do it by journal entry.
Four thousand one hundred and forty for this year, we don't know about next year, right? Four thousand one hundred and forty for this year, we don't know about next year, right? And then on it and then. She's lowering it down to what the actual cost was for this year, forty-one forty.
Uniform allowance.
Yeah, you've not spent anything according to this.
So we use, what money do we use for that? Cause I didn't order, I ordered.
For which one?
The uniforms.
Yeah, we used the COVID for that this year.
Are you gonna need any between now and June thirtieth?
We've got some new guys, we'll probably use.
A thousand dollars, I don't know.
Yeah, we probably will do at least.
Maybe a thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so from six to a thousand for this year and next year, you're gonna leave it at six, right?
Yeah, cause I'm gonna place one more order this year, so I have that down to a thousand for the rest of this.
So you're gonna do?
Do one thousand for now, take it from six to one for this year. We already ordered, we'll place one more order, Patty's gonna order.
After July?
No.
For next year.
Before.
So you're gonna need more than that? No, that'll cover it, okay.
So training, you have eighteen thousand for this year. And you spent six.
Yeah.
So we all then go, that would be our big bucket of hoping, but we all renew, so we go to conference, November tenth to thirteenth this year and there's seven of us to manage that though.
So the twenty thousand for next year's, okay, but this year you have eighteen, are you done for this year, training wise?
Well, so I pay.
So you've got, how many more months of?
So how many, what are we in, March, three more months.
Well, actually.
Down to, cause I pay Sean two fifty in training.
March, April, May, June, so.
Well, our training, not only does that come out.
Try pay the bill.
That covers the person that comes in training and then we do, the other thing we do, we use that training for is to buy um, training equipment.
Yeah.
And, and, and books and stuff that we use for E M T classes.
Well, last year you spent eleven thousand, can we lower this to twelve or ten? Tell me what. I'm sorry.
For this year?
For this year.
For this year. And leave it where it is for next year, just because like I said, we'll send a lot of people in November. And that's where that comes from, is the travel, the motel, to pay for coverage a lot.
Okay, ambulance medical supplies. Um, you've already spent over, just over nine thousand, so that has to go up. Um, are you, are you pretty well stocked though for right now till the end of June? Are you gonna need more money than?
So I place an order probably twice a month, I think, with life assist.
And you did your backboard.
So the nine thousand may be a low number.
Nine thousand's a lower.
That's what, we need to bump it up some.
We've already spent nine thousand five seventy-five.
Oh, that's even.
So we're already twenty, it's.
I know.
With the way things are going right now, twenty thousand is like. I mean, we're buying the batteries and stuff.
In a month's time, is your order around five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars?
So my last week's order was three hundred, cause I had a order.
But you ordered twice a month, you said, right? So that's at least six hundred a month.
Yeah.
And we have four more months, so that's twenty-four hundred dollars. So we probably need to make this twelve, you think?
Yeah, let's say twelve for this year and then leave it at twenty.
Yeah. Twelve thousand, sorry.
And then twenty next year.
Just because I, we are getting ready to place the order for backboard.
The collection fees, this is the fee that you pay to, to Sharp?
No.
To what?
The physician, she skipped over that.
Oh, I skipped that one. Yeah. Yeah, I figured the physician was fine, I'm sorry. But the collection fees. No, I, I'm, my fault. Is that Sharp?
Yeah.
Okay, so they only get what they, a percentage of what they collect.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that probably will be a lot lower, but we can, maybe they'll do have a big surge and. Yeah, it'd be nice.
And then the small equipment, we're probably pretty much. Yeah, thousand.
Bring the remittance to other governments.
Our sixty-five percent of worse reaches.
Okay, so, so that one, we didn't increase that. Cause we're waiting to see what the, so you almost have to double that to make it a thousand dollars a month. So that's, that would go up to fifteen, fifteen to seventy-two. Yeah. And then your, your capital outlay for the ambulance, this was the, the one eighty-five was the the highest out of the group, you could probably save, we could probably get, we might be able to get that for another fifteen thousand less, depending how we go.
A hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
That wasn't that painful.
How's your head, Marty?
It's a lot worse, I don't know, I guess I said I didn't think I'd be so sore, but.
She got, what, did the horse kick you? Is that what happened? Yeah. She, they, a horse got underneath a trailer, so they got stuck on a piece of metal and it got stuck in between it and then the horse was slid underneath the trailer. But the horse was fine, it looked. Yeah. Well, there was a whole group, I mean, there was a lot of people there.
When I kept saying this.
And then the horse, you know, when it got up, that's when it.
And someone's like, yo, grab a hose, and I'm like, give me a rope, like, I'm not gonna put my hand there and then.
Yeah.
He, they said, and you know, you're just quick, luckily I turned my head or else I've been like.
You would have been black.
But I was, I don't like a crowd, I had like the embarrassment and so like as soon as, like it threw me, my mom saw me up at the stand and it was like frost for my, like where the shoots are. So she saw me, my whole body was flying, my hat flew. And so like, just adrenaline, I stood up and I'm just looking, my eyes were like. Cause everyone was like, maybe she's in the ambulance, get her some help, and I'm like, bye, thank you. I just grabbed Eric and like just walk, they're all coming. All right.
Okay, so um, you guys picked your two people, the city picked theirs yet?
No, they haven't, so you need to talk to the city.
So do we need to?
Go see the mayor.
I would push it.
Go to the mayor, yeah. The other thing too is you can participate, it's, they're open meetings, you can participate.
That way if.
They have questions.
Board has questions, you guys are there to answer them.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much, I need to go to lunch.
Okay, we're due back at one thirty, right? At one thirty, we already, at one thirty, we already did the Karen. Hey, you got the easy one, it was the fire department.